Just let me know.
Okay, we're halfway there. All right, we're on.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We're going to call the July 22 meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. And as I start this meeting, I need to read a statement, which is pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the South River Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's South Borough's website, www.southbourotown.com. For this meeting, the members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on South Borough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay. So we are here. Just so you all know, another statement here is that all votes are going to be done by roll call. So if we have a vote, like to approve the meetings or to properly elect the next chair and clerk, I will call your name and then vote so that we do it kind of in an orderly fashion. Since we have a full board, Doris and Jamie, you won't technically vote on these things, but you're able to participate in the discussion. Although yeah, I think we had even on our last meeting, I was checking the minutes about what Doris's status was. You were just a remote participant. You weren't officially sitting. So that vote for the minutes will be myself, David, Debbie, and Paul in terms of approving the last round of minutes. The first item on our agenda is reorganization of the board. And this sounds a lot more intense than it really is. Every June, it's even July, we're supposed to elect a chairperson and a clerk. I've been the chair for the last two years. This is the final year of my term. It kind of does beg the question of Paul, whether or not you agree to a new five-year term. Did you?
What was that again?
Your term ended technically in June.
Yes.
Did you agree to a new five-year term with board of selection?
Against all better judgment, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So yeah, so this is my last year of my initial term. And I said last time when I took the chairpersons that I would not do it a third year. So at this point, we need to have nominations for a chair other than myself. So if somebody would like to nominate someone or themselves, feel free to do so. I haven't talked to any of you about this. So this is completely have at it of the city members. Unfortunately, Jamie and Doris, you're not eligible as alternates.
Well, Dave, have you been chairs yet?
I have not been chair. I have, I was about to nominate you, Mike, though.
Paul, have you been chair?
No comment.
Okay. Just because you were both on the board before I came. And so I would put this to Dave or Debbie for sure.
In all honesty, I'd be, I'd be very comfortable with any, any of you guys as the chair. So.
Thanks, Paul. Debbie, do you have an interest in doing it?
You know.
Do I?
Debbie.
I want to say, I think that Dave, you're a little more senior than I am on the board. But in honesty, you know, I worked for pharmaceutical, I worked for a couple pharmaceutical companies as a consultant, and I'm working on some COVID-related stuff. And I don't think that this is the year that I can, I can take. I'd like to in the future, but I don't think this is the year that I can do it. To just, just to be honest. Yeah. How about you, Dave? Or you, Mike?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a motion to nominate Mike, which is made by Dave. So my guess is that Dave has thought that Mike would be a good person for this ahead of himself.
Yeah, I think he would be. I don't, I don't want to, you know, equivocate too much. I just, I tend to have a number of evening calls in my, in my job anyway. So I mean, if, if, I guess, I suppose everybody thinks I would be the one who should do it. I would do it, but I am willing to nominate Mike, to be clear.
And to nominate Dave. Don't make me know that.
I'll make it more confusing. I'd nominate Deb even.
After position. No, to me, it's, it's one of the things where I'm just concerned about my schedule with a young family. Again, I think it's a role that we should be rotating for experience. And so the burden is shared. So because it is additional work. And I know, I know Craig's done a fantastic job, especially handling the meeting, the meeting so well. You know, my biggest concern is my family commitments, work, chaos. That's my only reservation. And I'm sure Dave has similar reservations as well, but it's really, you know, I really just think it's, if we want to, if Debbie's bowing out, you know, it's really just what makes the most sense for us as a board between myself and Dave then.
So I must, I must say it has been running rather smoothly with Craig at the helm.
I don't disagree.
Right. So what I will offer is I, my, my family obligations are significantly less. My job is local. It is highly, you know, daytime oriented. I don't have calls specifically at night often, if ever. Occasionally a public hearing or something like that. But I would happy to, I would be happy kind of in the vein that what Andrew did is like after being chair stepping into the clerk role and being, you know, backup, you know, assistant type thing to, to the given chair. So that there is a little bit of continuity. You know, going forward of there's a new chair, but the clerk is there to help and chair a meeting if the chair has another obligation.
Okay.
So Dave, man, you just got to tell me like where you're, if you're, if you're a hard no, you know, I'll, I'll step up. If you're open to it, take it away.
Okay. Well, I mean, if I suppose, I mean, having Craig as the clerk would make it a little bit easier. So I would be willing.
All right. So to do this properly, I think Dave, you have to remove your nomination of Mike, and then somebody needs to nominate you.
I'd gladly nominate Dave to be our new chairman.
That's seconded.
Dave, do you remove your nomination for Mike?
I withdraw my nomination of Mike.
Okay, Paul, you want to nominate Dave?
I would love to nominate Dave to be our new chairperson.
Mike, you still want to second that?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a nomination. We have a second. I'm going to do the roll call of the vote. Debbie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Mike.
And Dave?
Aye.
And Craig? Yes. So congratulations, Dave, as the new chair of the zoning board of appeals.
I've never seen Mike Robbins so happy.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. So the next, the next nomination is for clerk. I've already kind of thrown my hat into the ring. So if someone wants to do it officially, I will.
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Craig to be our new clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. I accept the nomination. And we'll do the roll call vote. Debbie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Aye.
And Craig, I as well accept the air vote for me to be the clerk. Well, fantastic. We're moving right along. Um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from February 12th, which wow.
You sent that out today. I can't believe that was the last time we actually got together and met.
And I didn't make it. I wasn't there.
Flacker. Glad you're not chair.
Way on that one.
And that's why you didn't get the nomination to be the chair.
There it is.
I was thinking about that, actually. You missed the last meeting.
Okay. So does anybody have any comments or changes to the minutes as they're written? I had one, I sent it to Katie earlier. I think she's updated the version in front of us today. Has that changed already?
What? That last looked good to me.
Okay, Doris, on this one, you're welcome to commute, you know, like participate and like share comments. You're just not going to vote as not having been sitting, but you obviously were there and can, can share any comments you have regarding accuracy and what you remember.
Changed in the minute.
I'm sorry, what?
You said there was a small change in the minutes?
Yeah, there was, there was one thing that I asked her to do. It was in regards to the 26 Main Street. In the, in the version that was sent out originally, we, we voted before we voted to close the public hearing, which may in fact have been the proper or actual order of what we did, but it's not the procedurally proper order. So I had the minutes reflect that we closed the public hearing and then voted on, on the matter itself.
Okay. I had a small question on 26 Main. So I read the minute and it's just, it's just a general question. They withdrew their application. They said it was a two residents. Is it a four residents or two residents? It's just a question.
I believe it's a two residents. Why do you ask?
Well, I don't know. I did go past the property. Because I live right down the street. And there were four electric meters on it. I didn't know if that would come before the board or not.
No, not necessarily. It's, it's really more how it's, how it's zoned and what their intent was. They'd, they had originally filed their intent to make it a two,
Right.
A two-unit property, which is what it was already classified as.
Right.
Therefore, they withdrew their application.
Right. I understand that.
So you know, unless there's a, you know, a violation notice that they need to appeal to us from like the building commissioner or something.
Yeah, it's a lot of our concern then.
No, not really. I mean, there's other reasons to have more than one electricity meter. You know, there could be a common area portion of it or, or some other factor that allows for, that requires us another meter beyond just two units.
Okay. No, there could be. For outdoor lighting. Something. Right. Exactly. Okay. That's it.
Any other questions on the minutes or comments? All right.
I had no issues.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Right. I'll do a roll call vote for all in favor. Go in with the people that were there. Dave?
Approve. Yes.
Debbie?
Yeah, approves.
Paul?
Approve.
And myself, I approve as well. And we'll leave Mike as an abstain as he was not at the meeting. Okay. Set the revised meeting schedule for 2020 is our next item on the agenda. I don't know what we really need to set. I mean, I think we have a standing kind of third Wednesday of the month plan. And that is obviously dependent on things to review and act upon. I guess the question would be, what do we have pending that people are asking for action on? And to that, I'll kind of throw it to Katie.
Sorry, guys. Just a small question about glow sticks. So we actually have a lot coming up. We have, right now I have two on my desk. One is the five Breakneck Hill from March. Another one just came in for changing a shed and making it bigger into a garage. I have two more that are just really anxious to get all their stuff in to come to the August meeting for, one is for another garage. It would be an addition. And then the other would be for a back deck that is within the setback. So we can keep the, the third week of August. I was wondering if we, if anybody's open to maybe even the fourth Wednesday, just so we can try and get some of these guys in who've been waiting, but it's totally up to you guys and your availability. And I'll do whatever we need to do. And if people have to wait till September, then that's fine, too.
So I don't think, I mean, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't think we're particularly interested in doing more than one meeting a month. And I don't think kind of the, you know, none of these are like groundbreaking, earth-shattering concepts that we shouldn't be able to, to get through in one night, even if there's four of them. So my sense would be to schedule them, you know, on the third Wednesday of August. And, you know, if it gets too late and we need to continue one, then, you know, for some reason, if that's the, the path that the meeting takes, then we address that at the, at that point. But I don't think we need to schedule a special meeting at this point. Anyone else have different thoughts on that?
Was Katie, was the, the thought that some people wanted to get stuff in? So just move it back a week just to accommodate or?
Yeah, that was more, I, I don't want more than one meeting either. If we can push, if you guys are available to instead of the third week, go to the fourth. So some of these people can get their, their stuff in. It's up to you guys, whatever you want to do. But that was kind of, I think you were anxious to get started, but.
For, for August, the third or the fourth week doesn't matter to me.
I can't, I'm only an alternate, but I can't do the third week. I'm flying back. So I can do the fourth week though, which I think is the 26th.
Yes.
And third is the 19th, right?
Great. Either, either one.
As I'm an alternate, obviously whatever is best for you guys.
Are we still going to be on a Zoom call or write? No?
Yes. It will still be handled in this fashion.
So it does, either one is fine with me.
You have to call in from your boat again?
It depends on the weather.
I think he's calling it a yacht.
I've heard him talk about his boat. It's not a yacht.
We could have a team building meeting if you guys want.
I don't know how we fit all of us socially distanced six feet apart on your boat.
No, you wouldn't actually.
Any other?
I'm with those calendar dates and I like the idea of trying to finish it in a night. I
Yeah, I'm up for the fourth, especially if it's Zoom, even if I'm away, I can make the time log in.
Right. Yeah. The fourth week, the fourth Wednesday is fine with me as well.
It's, it's okay with me too. Either, either one's okay.
Okay. So let's, let's schedule the meeting for August as the 26th of August. And if those other parties still don't make it in time for that, then they'll go to September. We've done everything we can to accommodate them.
That sounds good, mate.
Thank you, guys. You've just made a lot of people happy.
Ah, darn.
I know. It's not what we do here usually, but also, so just for clarification, you want to keep the rest of the year as is the third Wednesday for September, October and okay.
Yeah, sure. Because the third is one of the holidays.
What was? I know I had a conflict in July, which obviously was not an issue anymore. But yeah, otherwise we're still, the third Wednesday seems to work for all the other days, right?
Yep.
Now, let's get back on that schedule for sure.
I mean, that would work great for me because I'm on another board. We meet on the second Wednesday. So this works out well. This is the third Wednesday.
Okay. So that's it for things on the agenda. I don't Dave, there is something that I do want to talk to you about kind of offline.
I was going to say, what's the, what's the, the training process here?
Sitting next to you. Drop off a bunch of stuff on your porch and I run the other way as quickly as I can. No, there's, there's just some things that have been floating through the building department that Katie and Lori have been dealing with. I think, Mike, you've been, you've been brought in. They're not issues for the board at this point, I don't think. But I wanted to, you know, chat with you, Dave, about them and bring you up to speed on some of the things that have been bubbling up. Related to past decisions on how to interpret them, which my stance has been is not our job. You know, we, we don't initiate anything, but if somebody wants to bring an application to us to change it or something along those lines or a question of who violated it, then we would hear it. But I just want to talk to you a little bit about, you know, what we've been seeing and bringing you up to speed on it.
Okay. Sounds fine.
Okay.
Greg, I, I do have a question if we can kind of, if there's sort of an all other business kind of section, if I can just ask.
There isn't, but feel free.
Good. Just, just wondering, um, I, I thought the town planner was convening a group to start working on like the 10-year plan or something like that. And I even think that maybe we nominated someone from the ZBA to participate. And that was all before coronavirus.
That, that was Mike.
Oh.
So there is a master plan committee.
Master. Thank you. I was wondering if there's a status moving or is it sort of suspended?
Yeah. So there's a master plan committee in the, in the history here for, for Jamie and Doris was that we had originally nominated Andrew as, as he was in his final year in the clerk, kind of like the role I'm going to assume. And then he did not re-up for another five years. And all of a sudden, we were lacking a participant which was required. So we, we all agreed that Mike should be it. And I don't know what's happened since then. So Mike, if you, yeah.
I have no knowledge since my nomination. So I will apologize to all of you in all sincerity. It literally just wasn't on my radar, to my knowledge. I think there were two meetings. And then I haven't heard anything in, honestly, it had been completely forgotten by me until Debbie, you just mentioned it just now.
Yeah. And I don't, I mean, there hasn't been any notices that I've seen about them having a meeting either. Which Mike, you're, you're our official representative, so they should have sent you something anyway. And if they haven't, then I don't think anything's gone on. Quite honestly, I think there was, you know, if everyone remembers on the, on the town warrant, there were several zoning related articles. And my guess is that those took precedence in terms of time and effort for the zone or for the planning staff. And the master plan piece was kind of fell by the wayside for a bit. And then COVID didn't help. That would be my guess.
So I had a question. I mean, is it possible, for example, on something like that, that's a big project and no, no one person should be kind of burdened with it. But if it turns up to be active again, is that something where like, for example, we could maybe take turns being a proxy for Mike or something like that, just to help out so that we have a continuous voice, a ZBA voice on this master plan project?
So officially, we only get one representative and it, and it has to be a named person. To the extent that these meetings are occurring, they're open meetings. And, you know, if Mike wants to convey to the board that there's a meeting coming up and he can't make it, someone else is by all means say, able to say, yeah, I'm going to go attend and I will participate. But if they're actually voting on something, you will not actually be allowed to vote. You can talk and say, I'm with the zoning board. Mike couldn't be here. I'm going to talk on their behalf to the extent that I'm allowed to. But if there's any official action that has to be taken on one of those, you wouldn't be allowed to participate because you're not the name designated or any of us wouldn't be the name designated appointment from the board.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. And how can we get a little more plugged into these meetings? Katie, do you get notice of them? Or it would just might, maybe Mike could forward or can we get notified when there's meetings coming up? Coming up?
That's a good question.
If.
I think if I mean, somebody's obviously leading these meetings. If, if we, and I honestly, since Andrew was doing it and then Mike, I, I really haven't been that closely tied to it. But if you reached out to that person and said, I'd like to understand or be on the list of, of notices for when these meetings occur?
Yeah.
They probably would.
Okay. Yeah, no, I.
Through my emails right now. And honestly, my last email invitation, I want to say was last year. Like I'm, I'm skimming through my emails and honestly, there's just not much coming up.
Who, who sent the invitation?
The search.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking through, but like I'm already into October of last year.
I mean, my, my guess is if it's a master plan, if you talk to the, the town planner, they would, they would know when a meeting is going to occur.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, on my last meeting, here it was eight, 12, 2019.
Wow.
This is, that was my last email that I had received regarding the master plan. Yeah. And literally it was Andrew, are you getting the notices? And I go, I'm not. My last email was from you on June 25th. And then it was Mimi, can you please add Mike to the master committee, master plan committee list, Andrew? And then Mimi added me to the group. So.
Sounds like Mimi is the person to call.
So I'll follow up with Mimi right now.
Okay. So Katie, on our next agenda, let's see if we can add something for master plan update for Mike, which may be brief, but we'll remember it. Okay. Anyone else have some, actually, you know what? We have this time. Jamie, do you want to introduce yourself to everybody else as, as our new alternate?
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Paul, I actually came up from my boat and put on a T-shirt to, uh, I have my bathing suit underneath to come on this call. We are in Idaho. My family's lake house for the entire summer since life was pretty much canceled. And I look forward to being on the board now that, I think I was actually sworn in a couple of months ago because this, this all started right when COVID was starting. So look forward So look forward to actually seeing the board in action.
Do you want to give some background as to how you got to Southborough and, and stuff?
Sure. So I'm originally from Los Angeles. And I met my husband at Syracuse University and he was from Westboro. And we lived in California for a few years after I finished law school and then we ended up back in Southborough. We bought a house there in 2006. And have been there ever since. I have a, um, eight-year-old who's in the same grade as Katie's son Billy. And I have a daughter who's going seventh grade.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Where are you in Idaho?
Um, it's called Sam Point. It's on Lake Ponderay. It's very northern Idaho in the Panhandle.
Ah, wow. Yeah, I used to live out in Sun Valley.
Okay. Yeah. My, I mean, that's, I think about seven hours south of where we are.
I mean, if you're all the way up there.
Yeah, it's far, but my parents, um, bought this place in 1986. So coming up here almost my whole life.
Fantastic. Welcome aboard, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we have, uh, exhausted the things that are on our agenda. And if no one, oh, yep, Doris.
On the website, it says there was a master plan meeting on May 6th. Is that two seconds ago? Yeah.
Yeah, my guess is.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Yeah. I'm wondering if that probably got canceled.
They got a video on it.
Really?
Says live stream. I didn't run it because we're on the Zoom meeting, but Mike, maybe that's just something you want to check out.
Yeah, I just pinged, I just pinged Mimi.
Yeah, yeah. So somehow you didn't get, maybe not get on the list or something to that effect. Anyways.
Okay. Well, see now, Mike, you have some stuff to figure out and report to us next time.
Yeah, it's homework.
Homework. I don't want to hear homework tonight.
Well, it's good to know. All right. So I think we've, uh, as I said, exhausted everything else. Um, is there someone who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, that's my role. I'll make.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did.
Mike did. Okay. Um, I will do the roll call to, uh, to go through this. Uh, Debbie?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Paul?
Yep.
Dave?
Hi.
And myself, I as well, uh, vote to adjourn. And with that, thank you, everybody for your time. And, uh, congratulations, Dave.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks.
Got you.
And with that, we will see each other the fourth week of August on the 26th.
Okay.
And hopefully not before then, since we're supposed to be socially distancing.
Okay. Bye.
Okay.
Night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Yep.
Night.